Let's call this regular session of the Ketchikan City Council the order. Please call the roll.
Harris.
Right.
Carlson. Olson. Severson.
Here.
West.
Here.
Zingy. Here.
Please all rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. That brings us down to a public hearing on Resolution 132532 amending the 2013 general government annual budget, Fire Department 25,00353, Police Department 33,000, Port Department 17,500, and Tourism Economic Development 50,000. Does anybody here to speak on that? CNN will close that public hearing and we'll open a public hearing on Resolution 132528 amending the 2013 KPU budget. Electric Division 2.1, 2,107,000. That's for diesel fuel. Do we have anybody here to speak to that? CNN will close that. That brings us down to Communications. We have a supplemental diesel generation report. We have the Christmas Eve, New Year's Eve office closings directed by the mayor. And nobody got that. That brings us to persons to be heard. So Kathleen, you're up.
I know.
Thank you. My name is Kathleen Ledem. I live at Fort Tonseder Lower and I am the Director of the Arts Council. And I've come to just give you a little update on what's going on with the Arts Council members. Zingy, I don't think I've been able to give a report since you've been elected. So the Arts Council believes that we are accountable for the money that the city grants us and the borough grants us. And we believe we should be giving you reports to let you know where your funding is going to. So occasionally I come and give reports. So in October, we had a solo exhibit by Jim Gunther and 323 people came through the gallery. It was a nice show. In November, our Main Street Gallery exhibit is Dressing with Artitude. We have 60 pieces in there and we're representing about 24 different artists. So far, the opening reception was 155 folks and we've had about as many coming through the gallery since the opening. That does close on Wednesday before Thanksgiving. Total visitors in the gallery so far this year are 4,922 people through the gallery, just for gallery exhibits so far. The next exhibit in the gallery is opening on December 6th, which is a Friday, and it is Youth in Art. And it's featuring Ketchikan's young people. And we are sending out information to schools, to home schools, trying to get everybody aware of this exhibit. And we're inviting young people to put pieces in the gallery. So we are kind of getting a little nervous because we're getting a really, really good response. And we're hoping we don't have to go all the way to the ceiling with youth art. But that will be up all the way through the 13th of December. It's only two weeks. It's a really short exhibit. So if you want to come see that, you have to come quick. In November, of course, is the Winter Arts Fair. It's running November 29th, 30th, and December 1st. It's up at Cape Fox and the Ted Farias Civic Center. Features about 84 artists who are also small business owners. They will be showing and exhibiting their art pieces throughout that weekend. Also in December, on December 6th, is the Winter Art Walk. And that is from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. Features 20 artists or arts businesses in Ketchikan, all the way from the plaza, all the way down to Ketchikan Dry Goods and Chinook and Company. So businesses all throughout town. About 20 of those businesses will be featured. And then, of course, everybody stays open late on the Winter Art Walk night as well. About a year ago, I've talked to you guys about this before. About a year ago, the Arts Council convened a meeting of community members and we had a community cafe. And we were asking our supporters, artists, and others, educators, everybody we could invite, including the City Council and the Borough, Visitors Bureau, Chamber, other arts organizations, everybody we could get in the room, how the Arts Council could serve Ketchikan better. And we got a really, really good response from that conversation. We invited about 80 people and about 45 people came to that conversation. We asked them several questions to sort of direct us into the future. We have been retooling since then to meet those, meet the information that we got from that meeting. And we've developed some really, really, really wonderful things I'm excited to tell you about. But the first part of that was that this group of people, which was a wide variety, not just arts groups, but everybody in the community are very concerned about the calendaring of our community and how to do it and how events are banging up against each other and possible ways to avoid that. Sounds simple, but actually it's becoming kind of a problem in the community. Is the Arts Council, you know, the organizer of the community? No. But we are a good leader in the community and we have the tools to be able to organize a meeting of community members to talk about it. So we did that. And we did that, I think it was two weeks ago. And we invited about 40 community organizations, including arts organizations and other organizations that present. So I'm looking at her. So the plaza, the chamber, the Visitors Bureau, we had Relay for Life, we had the hospital, we had the school system, we had Big Brothers, Big Sisters, we had Community Connections, we had a whole range of organizations in Ketchikan coming there to represent their organization and talk about the calendaring problem in Ketchikan. What we came up with was that the city actually has a very nice calendar on your website. I don't know if you've looked at it. You go to the front page of the city website and right there's a city calendar. And if you click on that, you can get to a monthly calendar on the city website. The group elected to try out this website, this website calendar for about three months until February, to put all of our events on there as far in the future as we know. And then to reference that calendar whenever we are going to plan something new. And it's not that we aren't going to maybe conflict with another event, but at least we're going to do it with knowledge. And so we can sort of start to plan our lives a little bit more in a more organized way. We've worked with the clerk and she's graciously been working to allow those calendar events to go up on the calendar. It seems to be working fine so far. In February, all of the groups will reconvene again and we'll talk about what happened. And if we like it, we will then market the city calendar to the rest of the community to use, not only to plan events, but also to see what's happening in the community. And what a great way to, for everyone to access all of the events that are going on in the community. And so we're hoping this works out and we'll just wait and see. And I'll get back to you in February to tell you what we worked out. The second thing that we did, we've been retooling for about a year to respond to a big issue in Ketchikan, and that is arts education and lifelong learning. And our organization did not have an education-specific program in process for many years. And we've been working to make that happen. And in October, we switched over a staff member to become our Education Director. And we have had great success just in that little bit of time. The first thing, by request of Linda Harden from the school system, the Arts Council is going to work with the school district to offer a one-day workshop in January for teachers interested in learning additional techniques to integrate the arts into their curriculum. So they'll, the workshop will be led by local art teachers as well as artists. And we'll feature arts activities that the teachers can replicate in their classroom as they're teaching their curriculum, whatever it is, math, history, whatever it is. They can use these techniques to help solidify those, that information they're giving to their students. That's the first thing, and that's in January. Today, we just learned that Ketchikan was selected to host a Basic Arts Institute this summer in partnership with the Alaska Arts Education Consortium. This is a big deal. The Basic Arts Institute has been all over Alaska and it's been in the southeast, but it's never been here. It's been in Juneau, it's been in Haynes, and that's about it. It's never been in Ketchikan. We put in an application last month and we were selected for that. So that's really exciting. The Basic Arts Institutes are two-week intensive summer opportunities for educators to learn how to use the arts to motivate and increase student learning. Participating educators learn how to integrate the arts, so this is visual arts, drama, music, native culture, arts, into their school curriculum, work with and learn from Alaska Native elders, and understand the impact of the arts on student performance, motivation, and brain activity. There's a lot of research right now that is coming, bubbling to the top about how the arts help brain activity, creative thinking, critical thinking. So these are tools that our educators can use for our students immediately. And we're really excited about this. Over 11,000 Alaska students received arts education teachers trained at the Basic Arts Institute. So it's happening all over the state. It's not happening here yet, but it will. We're working on it. I mean, it's happening in some of the classes, but not in all of the classes. And so hopefully we can get to all of the educators. Educators from all over Alaska will be invited to participate in the Ketchikan's Institute and can receive university credit through the institute if they want to. So they can also get continuing education credit through this institute. Funding for the institute is provided by the Alaska Arts Education Consortium, but we will have to look for in-kind donations for housing and transportation. So it's paid for with the Alaska Arts Education Consortium, but our community will need to step up and put people in homes and move them around and stuff like that. So teachers from all over the state will come to take part in this. And what we've heard from our teachers who have gone to Juneau and Nome and other communities in Alaska, it's extraordinary. And they're very excited. They've been helping us plan this. So they're very excited to have this come to Ketchikan. And we're excited that we were able to make that happen. So those are just a couple of things that we've been doing, a few things. And the last thing I want to say, I know you guys probably hadn't had enough time to go through the budget yet. You've just got it. But I would like to encourage you to keep the community agency funding at the same level as it was last year. There is a cut in the budget and I would hope that you would keep it at the same funding level as last year. That's it.
Any questions for Kathleen? Thank you very much, Kathleen.
Thank you.
All right. I have nobody else on the sign-up list, but is there anybody else here wanting to speak to the council tonight? Come on up, sir.
Thank you very much. My name's Thane Peterson. And tonight, I heard on the radio that you would be doing a final reading, or at least a reading, of the 2013 adoption of the International Building Code along with Alaska statutes. Is that correct?
Correct.
I've looked at the proposed adoption synopsis, according to Title 19, both for 2013 and 2009. And in both of those synopses, it describes the intent of the city council to adopt Alaska Building Code in accordance with, of course, the IBC and the Alaska Administrative Code statutes. So previous, in 2009 adoption, there was an adoption of the International Building Code along with a few amendments to that. And then, again, it's my belief for the 2013 adoption, that it is the intent of the city to adopt the International Building Code along with a few amendments. However, the synopsis in both the 2009 adoption and the 2013 intent suggests that the city of Ketchikan intent was to mimic the State of Alaska's administrative law. And the city has failed to do that both in 2009, and it's my belief that it may be overlooked in 2013 as well. So there's almost 18 pages of amendments to the International Building Code that have been codified into law that is considered pertinent to citizens of Alaska. And I think that the city of Ketchikan should take those amendments into consideration as well.
Carl, what's the status on that?
I'm going to have to defer either to the city attorney or the building official. I'm not sure I'm tracking what's being said.
Yeah, one thing is we're under the 2006 code. Oh, check your building officials. We're under the 2006, we're under the 2012. But last code cycle, we had 54 pages. And this time, we have 14 pages. Because the direction is trying to limit the amendments to the codes and make it more feasible and understandable. I think we've done that. And as you know, we're a deferred community. And that means we have to follow the state fire marshals now. And that's what we're doing basically, taking those codes that are applicable to the city and adopting those, plus the plumbing and electrical code, which is under the processes of the Department of Economic Development. So we're trying to go along and it's embedded through all the committee meetings we've had with the home builders, the state fire marshals office, the unions, and the Department of Economic Development. And so that was our goal, is to limit the amendments to reasonable standard. And continue our goal to keep the state.
No, I'm just glad you guys went through the home builders and everybody's, that's all the take care of. Long before it gets to us.
Yes, that was the direction my superior.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does that help you in any way, shape, or form?
No.
Okay.
If you notice to the, at the second or third sentence of the intent of the proposed building code in the synopsis, the last portion of that was to provide a general rules of the road. The adoption will provide continuity to the industry and allow architects, engineers, and builders, which I believe Charlie has mentioned that he has covered all those bases. But after that, it says, "and the general public will be provided the same rules of the road." And I don't believe that that has been done yet. And I would like to see in cases where Ketchikan has not codified into law something that may be pertinent to them, that the city of Ketchikan will refer back to the State of Alaska's amendments other than the generic International Building Code.
Thank you very much. Carl, did you understand?
Mr. Mayor, I'm not an expert in this area, so I'm not going to try to.
Okay, come on up, Phil. Mr. Peterson is probably involved with this more than I am. So can you explain exactly what, I mean, he wants us to go back to the, instead of the international code, he wants us to go to Alaska code?
No, the State of Alaska has adopted the international code.
Right.
With additional amendments that might be pertinent.
And we have taken some of those amendments, not all of them.
But not all of them. And I would, I would like to see the city of Ketchikan, of course, adopt the International Building Code as it intends to adopt the state amendments that it finds to be pertinent with location. And in the event that something arises that is not codified into law, instead of having decided it's a hearing of public employees, that the Alaska State Legislature would have to pursue.
Okay. Cliff?
Cliff Allen.
How are we going to do that?
Public Works Director, City Engineer. I won't lie to you. That's a very broad question. No disrespect. The codes, if I'm understanding this phrase right now, are based on Alaska and further customized, if you will, for Ketchikan. I don't think any code or document can cover every possible scenario that comes up there. That said, I'm simply going to say that's why we have building officials. A definition that came up recently is what's the difference between a building inspector and a building official? And a building inspector is one who applies the code and enforces it, whereas the building inspector is one who interprets that code. So lacking any definitive specifics of what's being asked, I can't speak with clarity on what's in those 13 pages. But I can say, you know, that we have the ability to address the variations that come through and the individual nuances in any given permit. In addition to that, we also have the appeals board, which is not just public employees.
Correct.
If I can just add, it sounds, based on the conversation, that the manner in which we're doing it allows the discretion at the local level.
Correct.
Doesn't bind ourselves.
That's what I interpreted. All right. Any other questions, council members? Thanks, Cliff. Thank you, Mr. Peterson. All right. Anybody else who wants to address the council tonight? CNN, let's move into the agenda. That brings us down to consent agenda. I have a few. I have six, B1, 7A3, 7A5, and I think that was it. Does anybody have anything else they want to add? I have B1, 7A3, and 7A5.
I'd like to discuss 7A5.
I agree with that.
Okay. Oh, sorry, that's the one that wasn't supposed to be on there. I apologize. I want to discuss that one too. Thank you.
Or maybe it's a budget amendment.
Yeah, let's do the budget amendment and the other budget amendment on KPU, spending the money for the diesel. Same again. So 7A3, 7A4, and 7B1.
Did you say 6B1?
Six. And 6B1. Since the codes are, I'm putting those there in second reading, I think we should just vote on them since they are a big thing. Even though we've only had one this personally. All right. Do we have a motion to consent?
So moved.
So moved. We have a second. Moved in second. Madam Clerk, will you read items?
Approval of minutes, regular meeting of November 7th, 2013. Revocable unlimited permit to work on or encroach upon applied right-of-way, 429 Edmund Street. Negotiation of easements at main school parking lots. Financial compliance audit for the year ending December 31st, 2013, Mika Mercerson &amp; Company. Ordinance number 131735, tower colocation and land sublease agreement between the city of Ketchikan, DVA KPU, and Alaska Wireless Network LLC in second reading. Resolution number 132532, amending the 2013 general government budget for the Port Department, Fire Department, Police Department, and Tourism Economic Development. Resolution number 132528, amending the 2013 KPU budget to provide supplemental appropriation for the Electric Division.
All right. Nobody has any comments on them?
Your Honor.
Yes, Bob.
On 5A3, that's an easement on a main school lot. I'm not sure where that's all at because we didn't get a map on it. And I was wondering what is the dimensions of the easement? I know that a few meetings back, we had comments about what our easement should look like based for getting access. I was wondering what this one's like.
Morgan's going to come tell us.
Morgan Berry, Public Works Contracts and Grants Administrator. The easement in question is five feet in width. As is, if I'm not mistaken.
What goes down that easement?
What it is, currently, the, there are two residences that are at the bottom of the staircase that are only accessed by the hospital alley staircase. It's, what's going to fix that map? It's just uphill from Boden Street. There was a staircase that led down to those residences, but it was on private property.
Okay, I know where you're talking about now. Thank you.
So, back in 2001 or 2003, I believe it was, Ed Anderson established that the staircase in question was not built to city standards and was unsafe. And things didn't move very fast. Thank you very much.
And Lou, did you say that you, we put on the consent agenda, 7A3? That's the elevator one?
Yes. Do you want to?
And my only concern there is I know this is going prior to the major renovation of the hospital. Is it going to, are we going to have to deal with this through the remodel also? Is there anything that may change in that? Or is this, once we put it in, we're not going to have to alter due to the remodel?
Cliff says it's not going to affect anything, correct?
Oh, good. Okay.
Correct. Bob, this is in the existing part of the building and right now we're just dealing with expansion only on the big project.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob. Call the roll, please.
Harris.
Hi.
Zingy.
Hi.
Severson.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Olson.
Yes.
All right. That passes unanimously, six to nothing, no, seven, five to nothing. And that brings us down to 6A1, which is the ordinance 131736, amending Title 19 of Ketchikan's Building Code second reading. Do we have a motion? It's a long one.
Your Honor.
Go ahead.
I move the city council approve in second reading, ordinance number 131736, repealing existing chapter 1904 of the Ketchikan Municipal Code and adopting a new chapter 1904 entitled Building Code. Repealing chapter 1912 of the Ketchikan Municipal Code and adopting a new chapter 1912 entitled Electrical Code. Amending chapter 1914 of the Ketchikan Municipal Code entitled Plumbing Code. Repealing existing chapter 1916 of the Ketchikan Municipal Code and adopting a new chapter 1916 entitled Housing Code. Repealing existing chapter 1924 of the Ketchikan Municipal Code and adopting a new chapter 1924 of the Ketchikan Municipal Code entitled Mechanical Code. Repealing existing chapter 1926 of the Ketchikan Municipal Code and adopting a new chapter 1926 entitled Energy Conservation Code and establishing an effective date.
Moved in second. Marty, do you want to add anything?
That's probably all the talk and I'm going to do tonight.
Anybody else? I heard, understood what Mr. Peterson wants to come across. And I think that leaving it more into our hands and then just going straight to the state verbiage is probably more advantageous to us. I'm happy with the move on. I'm happy that we met with everybody ahead of time. I talked to the Home Builders Association and they were really happy with the process. Call the roll.
West.
Yes.
Olson.
Yes.
Harris.
Hi.
Severson.
Yes.
Zingy.
Hi.
Okay, that passes five to nothing. That brings us to the next one, the fire code. And I need a motion.
Your Honor.
Go ahead.
I move the city council approve in second reading, ordinance number 131737, repealing existing chapter 1804 of the Ketchikan Municipal Code and adopting a new chapter 1804 entitled Fire Code. Amending chapter 1808 of the Ketchikan Municipal Code entitled Interpretation, Construction, and Enforcement. Amending chapter 1812 of the Ketchikan Municipal Code entitled Permits and Licenses. Amending section 1816010 of the Ketchikan Municipal Code entitled Flammable Liquid and Bulk Plant Limit Established, Limits Established. Amending section 1824010 of the Ketchikan Municipal Code entitled Penalties. Amending section 1832010 of the Ketchikan Municipal Code entitled Adoption. Amending section 1836010 of the Ketchikan Municipal Code entitled Amendment Procedure. Amending section 1838 of the Ketchikan Municipal Code entitled Automatic Fire Extinguishing Systems and establishing an effective date.
Move in second. Marty, do you want to add anything to that?
No, thank, no. I don't.
Anybody else? Call the roll.
Severson.
Yes.
Zingy.
Yes.
Harris.
Hi.
Olson.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
That passes five to nothing. That brings us down to 7A1, ordinance 131738, new section entitled Change Directives to the Ketchikan Municipal First Reading. Do we have a motion? Go ahead.
I move the city council approve in first reading, ordinance number 131738, adding new section 3.12.053 entitled Change Directives to chapter 3.2 of the Ketchikan Municipal Code and establishing an effective date.
Second.
Moved in second. Matt, do you want to add anything?
No.
Carl?
Mr. Mayor, this ordinance actually just codifies what the current practice is. We're going to be moving into the construction of the new facility for the Ketchikan Medical Center. You can't stop work to come back to this board with approval, dealing with a change in conditions or a change in design without incurring excessive costs. We don't do it now. On the advice of the city attorney, we recommend that we codify the existing practices within the code.
So this is the way we have always handled it lately, I mean, for years?
For years.
Okay. And so he wants it right. Okay. Anybody have anything else?
Your Honor.
Yes, Bob.
Now, this is changes that fit within the approved amount of the project and contingencies. Is that correct, Carl?
Within the contingency, that's correct.
And there's no limits on as far as, I know that department heads or something like that or certain things have limits on spending. At what point would this have to come back to the council? Uh, at what point would this have to come back to the council due to spending limits?
As drafted, Councilmember Seaberton, there is no spending limit imposed. We're relying on staff to exercise their professional judgment to keep the project on track and, and not spend you into bankruptcy.
Now, do these things come back to the council, Carl?
Just as they do now.
And then, um, and it's limited to the, um, contingency?
That's correct.
Okay. Anybody else? Call the roll.
Zingy?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Harris?
Hi.
Seaberton?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
That passes five to nothing. That brings us down to seven, A two, ordinance thirteen seventeen thirty-nine, new subsection to section three twelve oh four, three of the Ketchikan Municipal Code entitled Competitive Sealed Proposals, first reading. Do we have a motion? Go ahead.
I move the city council approve in first reading ordinance number thirteen seventeen thirty-nine, adding a new subsection, I just section three point one, two point oh, four, three of the Ketchikan Municipal Code entitled Competitive Sealed Proposals and establishing an effective date.
Second.
Who didn't second it, Matt?
I, I like this. I think it gives us a little bit more wiggle room when we have a difficult project.
Carl?
Mr. Mayor, um, what this ordinance does is give us a flexibility if we're not able to come to terms with the preferred contractor ostensibly for the Ketchikan Medical Center. Addition, uh, it would allow the council the flexibility to go back to the second highest ranked proposer and deal with them if you can't deal with the, uh, highest ranked proposer and so on and so on down the list.
Didn't we already do this a little? So we didn't have to re-bid or did we ever do that? For some reason it seems familiar.
I'll refer to the city attorney.
I think we've done it in, in, in various circumstances and maybe under some other ordinances. What, uh, led to this coming about was in, uh, talking to the public works director, the project manager, and just working through the what ifs. The way it's in the ordinance presently, there would be an ability to go down and negotiate prior to award with other offerors. But we're not really using that model. And where sort of the technical hangup came that we wanted to deal with here is under guaranteed maximum price, they've been awarded the contract. So there's already been technically an award, so it's not, it, it's past that hurdle. You could still run into a situation where even though they have the contract, you can't agree on price. This is to address that set of circumstances, so we would not have to go back if we didn't want to and go through a whole new, uh, procurement process instead of getting a given project that further down the road.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions? Call the roll.
Harris?
Hi.
Olson?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Seaberton?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
All right. That passes five to nothing. Um, that brings us down to seven, A five, which is easement and encroachment permit Creek Street and Ketchikan Creek Tidelands. Marty, which one?
Uh, number two. I move the city council direct staff to advise Mr. Marvin Oliver that the city will not consider his request for an easement and encroachment permit for USMS seven thirty-one block C, lot O, Creek Street in Ketchikan Creek Tidelands until such time as he, the owner, complies with the city's August fifth, twenty-ten order to demolish the abandoned and unsafe structure at four nineteen Dock Street, commonly referred to as the Nickrbocker Hotel.
Second.
Who didn't second it? Marty?
It, it floors me that he would even ask, um, when he's got something like this that's outstanding. Um, yeah, no, I just, I'll stop there. I'll just go on for the rest of the night.
Your Honor, if I can jump in?
You bet, KJ.
Pretty much the theory is if you want to build something new, you take care of the old stuff first. And this has been staring at us for years, the building's completely falling apart. And we need to get it taken care of whether the owner wants to do it or not, if he wants anything from us, permits and stuff. Take care of your business first. And that applies to everybody, not just Mr. Oliver.
Anybody else? Call the roll.
Seaberton?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Harris?
Hi.
West?
Yes.
That passes five to nothing. That brings us down to seven, A six, accepting resignation of Councilmember Sam Bergeron. Do we have a motion?
Your Honor, I move the city council accept the resignation of Sam Bergeron from the position of council member and direct the city clerk to advertise the vacancy in accordance with K, Ketchikan Municipal Code section two oh four oh two nine.
Who didn't second it? Marty, do you want to add anything?
I appreciate his service, but since he no longer lives in town, this is the appropriate action.
Anybody else? Call the roll. Oh, go ahead, Matt.
I just have one question about the process. The advertisement, is that for ten business days or ten?
Well, it says at least seven days and it doesn't signify in the code. I thought it was seven days. Was it ten?
I thought it was ten.
Well, maybe it is ten.
That's ten. I think you told me ten, that's why.
Did I tell you ten?
But it could be seven.
Or it was in the newspaper. Well, the code says seven, so.
Yeah, I think it's seven.
Okay.
Seven days.
Just want to remind every, did you say, yeah? I didn't want to jump in.
Oh, you bet.
Okay. Just want to remind everyone that we have a space available on the council. So if you have any desire, please get a hold of the clerk, get yourself registered in so we have some names because we need, need some new blood up here. So, please, check around with your friends. I'm not, I don't mean, you know what I mean, come on.
Uh, we love the budget.
To answer your question, um, my, my thought is to begin the advertisement on Saturday because that's about the quickest I can get it in. And are, is the paper closed on Friday next week?
No.
Okay, well, next week.
It is on Thursday.
Okay, we've got one short day next week, so my intent was to advertise through Monday, the second. Unless the council directs me otherwise to have advertisements by five on Monday, the second. So the council will have to determine when they want them on the agenda after that point.
Um, well, let's, let's advertise through the second and then let's look and see how many we have. Uh, we have a special meeting on Tuesday and we have a regular meeting on Thursday and see what we want to do. I shall check with the council. We'll do one or the other meeting.
Well, on Tuesday, the meeting for Tuesday will be too late to advertise.
Okay, well then let's.
We need to advertise because you have to interview.
Okay, well then let's do it on the regular meeting of the fifth.
Mr. Mayor, just to let you know, the regular meeting of the fifth is already shaping up to be quite the meeting, so.
But we will, um, I will check with council members. Right now, let's shoot for the fifth and we'll go from there. Anybody have a problem? All right, so we'll be done. All right.
Do you want to call the roll?
Let's call the roll, please.
Harris?
Hi.
Zingy?
Yes.
Seaberton?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
All right, that's approved, five to nothing. Sorry to see Sam go. Um, that brings us down to seven, B two. Southeast Alaska Power Agency requests for offers of power and energy sale of Whitman Lake Hydro as one of our proposals that we can send to them. Do we have a motion?
Your Honor?
Go ahead.
Pursuant to Southeast Alaska Power Agency, January thirty-first, two thousand thirteen, requests for offers of power and energy. I move the city council authorize the general manager to propose the sale of the Whitman Lake Hydro Electric Project on such terms and conditions detailed in staff's report dated November thirteenth, two thousand thirteen.
Who didn't second it? KG, did you want to say anything about it?
I think it's well worth checking into because I've always, in my own little mind, I always thought it's either a barely break even proposition for Whitman Lake or losing proposition. I think it's a good chance to sell it off or at least talk about it.
Carl, so after, um, talking to you and talking to Trey, um, so we'll be putting, submitting this by November twenty-ninth, correct?
Correct.
And then they can look at it as one of the options and?
I would assume it's one of multiple options that SEPA will entertain and, uh, if they determine that they're interested, they'll be getting back to us and we'll sit down and see if we can put a package together. And that would have to come back to the council for your approval as well as the SEPA board for it.
Okay. And then, um, and I'm, um, I guess I had some questions. Um, is our power guy here? Can you power guide? Andy, come on up. And it's not specific. We're talking about Whitman. The scenario right now is we're running some diesel. Let's say we had Whitman online right now. How would that affect what we're doing right now?
Andy Donato, acting division manager, KPU Electric. Um, it would have a positive effect. Whitman, uh, Whitman, even a small unit that would run, uh, it's engineered right now to run twenty-four, seven. Uh, and it would give us five hundred, um, megawatt hours a month for a total of six gigawatt hours a year. So it would, every day it would be generating and it would be, it would help, right?
How many, I mean, how many diesels would be, we have to be running right now if that was online?
That's a difficult thing to answer and the reason being is, um, when would we have started it? How would it have affected the water year? Right? So you'd have to tell me that, that first. Uh, let's face it, if we had it right now and it was available to spin, we'd be spinning it. Now, if you're asking me.
I know, but we're spinning that. Are we running three diesels, two diesels, or one diesel?
Uh, we're, we're, well, one diesel, maybe two, only because it was so cold here earlier in the week. We're running one diesel and we're trying to limit our imports, uh, to keep the second unit of Swan off. And so we're limiting our imports somewheres between twelve and fifteen, uh, megawatts coming in, uh, from SEPA.
So we're running one diesel right now?
We're running one diesel right now.
So if we had Whitman up, could we turn that diesel off or would we still be using it?
We'd probably, we'd probably still be using that diesel. However, if we were using Whitman earlier in the year, we may not have been in this situation.
I know there's tons of scenarios, I'm just, I'm very basic, so. The, um, what do you call it, um? I guess that's it.
Well, okay, so let me just mention here, uh, a week ago, I can't speak about this week, but a week ago, Whitman was spilling. And I can't say that it would be spilling if we were constantly, uh, tapping it for electrical energy. Uh, now that same week ago, we were twenty feet low at, uh, uh, at Swan. And I can't give you the numbers for the other lakes, but we're below, uh, where we would want to be this time of year. So had that energy been available, we certainly would have tapped it. It would have been in the, in a positive direction. I don't know if that answered your question.
Thank you.
Sure.
Carl?
Who?
Go ahead, Bob.
Yeah, you know, it's gonna be as variable as the weather. When we have a wet year, probably won't be used as so much. We have a dry year, we'll use it where we can. Um, but the issue before tonight on option four, what that's doing is it's just putting and leaving it on the table gives us that option. And it's by, not any means binding on the city or on SEPA. Uh, but it opens the discussion to see if there's a better way to operate that to make it the most efficient that we can. And then with, with option four, which is a partnership ownership or whatever, however that works out, um, then we don't have to necessarily deal with a true-up agreement.
Thanks, Bob. Anybody else? Go ahead, Matt.
I, I, I support, I, this. I think this is something that, or I wish that we could have, uh, done this when, when the project first started up. I think SEPA, as its position, should become the owner of all the new hydro projects in the area just for this reason, to bring stability and to better not only just our community, but our region. So I think this is a good move on our part and a good move for SEPA.
Anybody else? Call the roll.
West?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Harris?
Hi.
Seaberton?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
All right, that passes seven to, oh, five to nothing. That brings us down to vouchers. Daily news, a thousand, two hundred and thirteen dollars and seven cents. Do we have a motion?
Your Honor, I move for approval of vouchers to Ketchikan Daily News in the amount of one thousand, two hundred and seventeen dollars, seven cents.
Moved in second. Call the roll.
Seaberton?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Harris?
Hi.
Olson?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
All right, that passes five to nothing. That brings us to managers report. Carl, do you have anything to add?
Just a couple. Mr. Mayor, um, as you alluded to at the beginning of the meeting, unless the council, uh, directs otherwise, I'll, uh, inform the departments that you granted everybody, uh, tapping them off Christmas Eve and New Year's Eve.
Well, thank you.
We already touched upon the diesel situation, so I won't, uh, comment on that. The other thing was, I laid a couple photographs on the table, uh, tonight. Uh, our children's librarian position continues to be vacant. Uh, it's kind of putting a little bit of stress on the library department. Some of the other department heads and departments are helping, helping out. Top photograph is your civic center manager today at the, uh, civic center. Our, at the library doing storytime and the other photograph is the fire department, I think a couple weeks ago, pitching in. So we got a good crew. All of that, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Um, does anybody have any questions on any items? All right, um, that brings us down to city clerks file.
Uh, the deputy clerk and I were in training, uh, Sunday, Monday, and Tuesday this week. It was, it was long days and, uh, lots of training. And I was, um, actually very honored to be selected as the state association's clerk of the year for two thousand thirteen.
How much did you have to pay? Congratulations.
It's nothing, this time.
All right. All right, brings us down to city attorneys file. Future gen items. Mayor and council comments. KG?
I'm almost there. Okay. Yeah, I missed last council meeting. I apologize for that. Something I wanted to say at last council meeting that I'll say now is get out there and thank a vet. Either a vet now or who has been or who's just signed up. It was a real important thing. We wouldn't be here if we didn't have the vets that took care of us to get us here. The other thing I want to mention is that many, a couple of weeks ago, we voted or a show of hands in the council to stick to the two thousand thirteen budget. I wasn't one of those that raised my hand. I don't know of anything that's the same price now as it was in two thousand thirteen and I just have a real hard time figuring out how we can hold the budget the same when everything's gone up. Especially now that we're talking about a possible either layoff or suspension of employees because you know that's not gonna go through with the council. And Carl's got a real hard job with that. The other thing I've got is, uh, at two thirty tomorrow, I'm meeting with Kathleen Light over at the Arts Council Building across the street. I'm inviting all fellow councils to come over because I'd just like to hear their side of how this whole, uh, ring gauge thing came about. Because I'm hearing different stories from different people and I just want to give them a fair chance. The other thing is I want to, if I could, start a hand clapping and everybody say, way to go Katie for being clerk of the year. Always been clerk of the year in my mind.
All right, you're too good. Marty?
Thank you.
Um, yeah, I, I'm glad that we addressed the issue about the Nickrbocker Hotel. I don't think that, I know Mr. Oliver, I've got nothing against him personally. But he has ignored pretty willfully an order that's over three years old to demolish the building. Um, I think that it's important that we let people know that we're serious about requiring the owners of properties to be responsible for those properties and that we're not gonna find ourselves in the same situation we did with the, uh, Ketchikan Apartment Building. Um, so I'm, I'm glad that we hopefully made that point tonight. Other than that, I was gonna say congratulations to Katie. I think you're great. Uh, I'm glad that they recognized it on a state level, too.
Matt?
Echo what Marty said on both counts. I think it's, we spent close to three quarters of a million dollars tearing down one building and seventy-something tearing down another. We don't even tear down every building in town A four oh. And I'm just like to thank Sam for his service. Things stabilized, we'll see him again.
Bob?
Um, yeah, as, as, uh, Matt had said, I'd like to thank Sam for all of his service. Um, and Katie, uh, it was a real prestigious award. There's voted for by her first, her peers up here and, uh, it was nice to be here and see her accept that award. So congratulations, Katie. And that's all I have.
Judy?
Well, I echo everyone's comments and I would like to thank you, Katie, for the arrangements you made for my NEO training. It was very long training, but I really enjoyed the experience at Anchorage. It's very, very cool.
Thank you very much, Judy. Um, I, I agree on Katie. I mean, I guess she deserves it.
I guess, you know.
Um, I do appreciate Sam's service. Um, I do appreciate Sam's service and I hope things go well for him in the future. I'm hap, I'm really just so happy on this building code stuff. I remember in the years when I first started way back when, when we did these, we'd have people in here arguing over the codes and working with all these organizations ahead of time. It's just made it so much better. Um, uh, Monday I met with, um, Mike Chenault, the speaker of the house, a couple groups I was there with Trey. We were pushing the, um, Swan Lake, letting him know what the projects are in this area. Mayor Kiper was there with, and some borough people talking about, um, projects for them too, so at least knows what's going on in, um, Ketchikan and it went, um, well. Um, I've gotten all kinds of input on the rain gauge. And I'm, people that want to, if, um, we want to make it where it's a real rain gauge, I've got, Mr. Bartosz has called me and told me things to make it so you can keep the green away, how you can make it, um, trap the water better. There's, um, and there's an excitement and there's two different excitements. There's the group that, um, like it, there's a group that wants to work with it and thinks it's a great idea and wants to make it, um, really successful. And then there's a group of people that tell me I shouldn't, we shouldn't spend the money. Um, so it's made a lot of talk and, uh, makes it real interesting and I've, um, actually enjoyed it and listening to people that are really excited about how to make this thing as a working, if we want to make it a working and if that's the intent of, um, the process, um, we can, how they can make it better and, um, make it work, so. We'll see what happens in the, um, coming to a contract and everything and where it goes, but, um, there's a lot of local residents who would love to put some input into it. And I told them that moves forward, we will, uh, make sure they, uh, get a chance to, um, throw out their ideas out. Um, I cracked the budget. I haven't got very far. Thank goodness we're delaying for a couple of weeks because I'm way behind. Um, otherwise, I'd like to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving next week and do we have a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
We're adjourned. Carl, maybe take it easy on that budget, I mean, on that first.